Hi, I'm Jack Hathaway. Welcome to Conversation Corner. We're here in the beginning of November and I'm joined by my good friend Jim Leehan, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. Welcome Jim.
Thank you. Always good to see you.
Yeah, it's good to see you.
About two hours.
Beautiful day out and it hasn't started snowing yet, so we're off to a good winter.
Good luck.
So, we're here today and to talk mostly about town meeting. We've got a town meeting coming up on November 17th, 7:00 PM in KP Middle School, so I hope everybody can join us. It should be a relatively light lift, as they say. We've got nine articles, so we shouldn't have any problem getting through one night.
I hope not. We had really called this meeting originally for the project down at Southwood they'd been working on for, gosh, over a year.
Yeah, close to two, I think.
Close to two, I think. But at the last, I won't say quite at the last minute, but we decided that we would not go forward with an article at this point in time. There are some issues that we just haven't brought to conclusion. Maybe just a few minutes on that. I think everyone knows the old Southwood Hospital down off of Route 1A, opposite the prison, the Walpole Prison. There's a proposed development down there that includes about 220 single-family opportunities that would be all restricted age. About 120 or 150, I've forgotten which apartments, that would be one and two-bedroom and all upper-end or A-class apartments. And a, why am I?
Assisted living.
Thank you. And an assisted living complex that would go from the early stages of assisted living, where you're fairly independent, all the way to complete dependency. It's a good project. It's well-suited for that property, but it brings issues to the community and we've been trying to work through those issues. And we've negotiated some mitigating considerations, water being one of them. And the developers agreed to provide some funding to the town for public safety and the water. If this, everything went as planned and everything as we hoped it would, the agreement's pretty good. It's a good deal for the town, it's a good deal for the developer, probably a good deal for the Archdiocese, which owns the property. The concern we had is if the developer flips the land, or for whatever reason doesn't go to closure, or who knows what. We might find ourselves having changed zoning and to accommodate the project and not have the necessary mitigation to offset the zoning change. So, that's really in the short version of why we decided to hold off on that. We still like the project a lot. We've met with the developer since then, had several conversations with him. And we have four points that we're trying to work through. One is an escrowing of funds upfront, prior to the change of zoning. If the town doesn't approve zoning, we would return those funds. If the town does approve zoning, then we would retain those funds and they would be used as a resource to begin the projects to find a new water source, which would be required with this project once it's completed. As well as compensation for public safety, both police and fire. Very little impact to schools with this project because all of the individual homes are restricted age. Clearly, there won't be any children in the assisted living. And with one- and two-bedroom apartments, you're going to have really very few children there as well. So, the schools really will not have any dramatic impact. So, it's work in progress. If we can work through those issues, we probably, I think the board has agreed to call a special town meeting as opposed to taking this to the May meeting because it'll get lost in the financials and it deserves its own attention because it's a significant project. So, that's the reason we pulled it off. You know, our role is to ensure that we do everything we can to protect the interests of the town. And so, the board made the decision unanimously to hold off on it.
Yeah, and I think, I think it was uniform. You know, I don't think there was any, certainly there wasn't any controversy at all.
No, no.
The Board of Selectmen all, you know, understood the issues. And as you said, we're still moving forward and we like the project.
Yeah, we do like the project. The revenue numbers to the town, it's pretty good. You know, it's assuming future boards, 10 years down the line, don't waste it. It'll provide some relief to the taxpayers if it's done properly. But the issue is more short-term in that we do have mitigating considerations, very much water. I mean, water's a big issue. We're looking for a new source now. And we have not found one at this point in time. And we need the funding to do that. It's about a million and a half to two and a half million dollars for a new well source and I think three, four years to permit it, somewhere in that range.
Yeah.
So, we need to get at it now. We're actively looking for that source. But if we find that source, we would like the developer to pay for it because he's going to be one of the primary users of that new source. So, we'll get there, hopefully. The meeting we had with him after he learned that we'd pulled it, so to speak, was favorable. He indicated that he would work to meet the demands or considerate, I shouldn't call it demands because they're really not, they're just, "We need to know where all the buildings are going to be. We need to know the impact of all the areas associated with the residents." You know, if one plan shows it on the left side of the property, it ends up on the right side of the property. That has a very dramatic impact on the people that live near this. And so, we don't want that unknown. So, there's more testing that needs to be done, things of that nature to nail everything down. So that when we go to town meeting, you'll be voting on an overlay district, which means it's exactly the way we lay it out. You're voting on a very specific plan, location and everything. And we just believe that's the right way to do it.
Yeah, I agree. Looking forward to continuing that project.
Hopefully, we'll get there.
So, that's the big article that we, as you said, the Selectmen took off. And then the other, we have three or four articles that are just kind of our boilerplate articles. We've got, you know, committee reports and transfers and prior-year bills. We don't expect any big transfers other than, we know we have to close the snow and ice deficit from last year. We've got to finish that. And we've got some free cash in order to do that. And then we are putting some money into our health insurance employee benefit account just because we knew we had left that a little short last year. And there was money coming back from the elementary school that was in the year-end close that we'll use to fund that shortage as well. So, those are the big things. There's a couple, there'll always be a couple little, you know, thousand-dollar articles to clean up some budgets, but nothing of dramatic impact there.
Yeah, but one point, if I could, Jack, because I think it merits folks knowing because it really speaks so well to your finance department and all of the departments, actually including the schools. We had over a million dollars of free cash certified this year, second year in a row that's happened, unheard of in prior years. And a lot of that came from people being very judicious in how they spent their budgets. The schools returned, I think, $150,000 to us this year. So, it's, the reason we're able to do this and the reason we've had such success is that the budgets are really well-managed by your department heads.
We do.
They should be complimented for that.
Well, thank you. And they should be. They, you know, we've got, I was thinking about it the other day, preparing for some other meeting and just thinking about the department heads and the employees. We've got a great group of people who, you know, really, in, you know, most cases, if not all cases, put the town first and think, you know, really think about what they're doing when they spend money.
Well, if you think, I mean, you've been on board now 12 years?
Yep.
If you think, well, actually, you and I came on together pretty much, I think. But if you think back where we were 12 years ago, in terms of the finances and the times that we went through between 2008 and 2000, really 2012, these were tough times.
Yeah.
And we had, I think, a little over $600,000 in reserves on a good day. Now, we have well over a million and counting. Bond rating, I think, has gone up twice in that period of time, which during those types of recessions is somewhat remarkable. And all that really is a tribute to the finance department. And the way we've refinanced some of our debt and things of that nature, they've done a great job, done a great job.
They have. And it's, I'll take the compliment, but I'll also reflect it and say, you know, it's the town, it's the Selectmen, it's the Finance Committee, it's department heads, it's, you know, it's all of us working together. And Norfolk is such a great community. You read about other communities that fight amongst themselves over silly little things. And, you know, not to say we don't have a little spat once in a while, but as far as the direction and knowing that we're all trying to do the best for Norfolk, it's really a testament to the whole community, not just...
Yeah, as a whole, I think we all kind of row in the same direction.
Yeah, yeah, it's great. So, what else do we have? We have a couple of, yeah, we're both fighting a little bit of a cold, so apologize for that. We have a couple of general bylaw changes. We have requests that, actually, the moderator and I have worked on for a while, talked about for a while, going from one year, the term of the moderator, increasing it from one year up to three years. All of our elected positions in Norfolk are three years, except for the moderator. I would, you know, I support this idea just because I think it's a good, for continuity, continuity going into the town meeting. It's difficult to have the election a week before a town meeting and then not know who the moderator's going to be every year. You know, we'll still have that problem every third year, but I'd like to see a little continuity. And then, you know, it's nice to have some stability in the position too. You know, not that we've been turning over moderators, but most of them have...
We've had, considering we had Frank Groos for about 25 years and we're now in our third moderator since he left, we have had some turnover. I'm not speaking for the board, but I support it as well. I think it just makes a lot of sense. And, you know, but the public will decide. We put it on the warrant and let them decide. There's about half the towns, as I understand it, have gone to a three-year term. And so, it's just sort of traditional for the moderator always to be one year and no one's ever really paid much attention to whether they wanted to change that or not. Rantham has had the same moderator, Keith Billingham, forever. We did with Frank forever. So, I think it makes sense. But voters will decide.
And I know Mr. Tallerman is going to step down, if he's re-elected. He'll step down from, at town meeting, oh, no, sorry, we're talking about the fall town meeting, jumping ahead. So, at the fall town meeting, when we talk about this article, he will recuse himself and he'll have a stand-in as moderator.
Assistant town moderator.
Assistant town moderator, fill in for him. So, should be entertaining. The other bylaw change is a relatively small one. We have a, we're eliminating the bylaw requirement for a bylaw committee. Over the last few years, we've had the bylaw, you know, any changes to the bylaws really kind of get worked on by the clerk or myself, along with the moderator. If somebody else, like the Selectmen, are proposing a change, we work on it with whoever the proposal, proposer is. We just, working with the Advisory Board, just didn't think, feel the need for another committee. The Advisory Board weighs in on these articles as well, so I think we can just eliminate that. And if we need to commit, create an ad hoc committee, we can always do that.
Yeah, it's kind of like, we've been doing a little bit more of this recently. We had the, well, we started with the permanent building committee, I think, ways back. And most recently, we've been looking at some of the other committees as well, Capital Outlay being the one that was most recent. And it was always sort of the tradition of the town that we had committee after committee after committee after committee. And it was a good thought to get more people involved, but you were putting people in positions to make decisions that they had very limited information on, very little information. And having brought in a planner now and some other folks, where we're getting more professional help than we've had in the past, it makes sense. There are enough parts, enough steps in the process that it gets viewed by many, if you will, that we think this makes sense. Moderator who appoints that committee also supports this.
He does. And then, so then, now the meat of the town meeting will be to talking about the public safety building, buildings. So, we have a proposal to request the town for a total of $14 million, 1.8 million of which we've received approval for in the past, and we used most of that, or 1.1 million of that to acquire the building on Sharon Ave. Now, we're looking for an additional $12.2 million to renovate that building.
Excuse me, please.
Create a police station. And then, and then also, after that is done, we move the police department down to Sharon Ave. We would then focus our attention on the current public safety building. We'd add on a couple of bays, along with a few office-type areas, and then renovate the existing building by getting rid of the cells and getting rid of the dispatch area and creating a fire department. So, again, we're looking for $12.2 million, of which we would have a debt exclusion, a ballot question in the future, probably sometime after the new year, and ask for those funds to be excluded from Proposition 2 and 1/2.
I know you're, this is really one of the reasons we wanted to get together here today, was to start to share this information with folks because we've been trying to build a public, new public safety facility for, gosh, probably 10 years or more.
Yeah, there were some efforts even before I, you know, long before I got here.
Actually, I think predates both you and I, yeah. So, it's been an effort of love because the need is really pretty desperate. We, I think it was 2012 when we brought it to the ballot once before. And I think the project at that time was $14.2 million. And it was really to renovate the existing facility, which is in pretty bad shape internally. Externally, it looks pretty good, but...
Brick looks nice.
The bays are undersized, they've been, the size of them has been adjusted a couple of times.
Sometimes intentionally, sometimes not.
Yeah. But there was clearly a need to do that. And I think we lost by eight votes out of 1,500 votes. I think it was an eight-vote difference. And sometimes you get lucky for the wrong reasons. I know we were all disappointed that it didn't pass because the school was being passed at the same time. So, that was a tough bullet for folks to bite, understandably. But we were disappointed. As it turns out, it's probably, in a very strange way, kind of a good thing. Because at the time, any regionalization efforts were just sort of a fantasy. I know you and I had many meetings with other towns and we'd spend a lot of hours talking about it and then nobody'd show up for the next meeting. But a lot through your effort and the other town administrators' efforts, and you kept the Selectmen out of it, which is probably why it worked. We are regionalizing dispatch. And in fact, construction should start this spring or summer, am I right?
Yep, as soon as we turn over the...
Contracts are signed, money's in the bank, it's going to be a good deal. And what that allows us now to do is to, had we gone forward, let me back up a little bit, and then if you can share with folks a little bit more about what we're gonna do, just historically, because I think it's helpful to put it in perspective. We would have been, we were going to renovate the existing facility. And what it would have meant was that we would have had to put the fire department down and the DPW. And I think the police would be going to try and find a way to get them into Town Hall because the building would have had to been gutted and completely redone. Now, we can avoid that. So, while the project was $14.2 million, there were, and this is in 2012 dollars, there were a lot of other issues associated with this that made it not only more expensive than the $14.2, but really cumbersome on us to try and figure out how to manage the process while we work through that building issue. Now, we don't have to do that. And because of dispatch being regionalized, that project becomes much simpler, much easier, and in today's dollars relative to 2012 dollars, cheaper. So, I think a $14.2 million project in 2012 at 3% to 4% would probably cost us somewhere in the neighborhood of $17 to $18 million in today's dollars. And this project is going to be $14 million and we're getting more square feet and a better opportunity. So, strange to say, but we actually got lucky.
Yeah, we are.
Through no great wisdom of ours.
Well...
But talk about, talk about the new building.
If we can look at the floor plan for the police station. We've got some, there we go, some JPGs for you. And I know you can't see the detail and I certainly can't see it from here, but, so we've got a, we've got a rectangular building down at Sharon Ave that's 16,000 square feet as a footprint. So, we, right now, we're talking about putting a second floor in that building. It's a building that has never been occupied. We, it's the building that we voted to take by eminent domain a year and a half or so ago. So, we would, you know, improve the insulation in the building, we'd bring in the utilities, put all the mechanics in place. But this is the, this is the, kind of the, probably the third or fourth draft of what the footprint would look like, what the floor plan would look like for the police station. You've got garages down on the right, so we can get, you know, half a dozen to, if we really cram them in, we can probably get a dozen cars in during a storm. Something that's a luxury that the police department has never had and something that's important when you think about all of a sudden sending an officer out in an emergency in cold weather and, you know, you want them to have a windshield that's clear for the, just as a basic fundamental. We've got locker rooms in there for the male and female police officers. Obviously, we have offices, we have offices for the administrative staff and the chief and the deputy chief and detectives. I encourage you to take a walk down to the, or take a drive down to the current police public safety building and look at, you know, the facilities they have there. They just, they just don't have, in today's environment, really what I would call a professional, professional facility.
Well, roll call, I believe, is held in the hall.
Yeah, roll calls held in the hall. There's, detectives have, you know, they're just, their offices are overflowing with evidence. So, it's, you know, it's important for them to be able to keep, keep things neat and they really just don't have the space to do it. So, this is the basics of what the floor plan will look like. And the second floor that Chris just put up for us is, this is the proposal here. In the middle of the building, you have the Regional Dispatch Center. So, that's going to be the communications area for Norfolk, Rantham, Plainville and Franklin. And we'll have, we'll have dispatchers in that room. And that construction is going to be paid for by the state. We've got over $3 million in grants to do that, to buy the equipment and to build out that, that tenant space, if you will. Over in the left in the yellow is a big training room that will probably end up being an ad alternative when we go out to bid. It's something that, you know, we would certainly like to have and hope to have, but as far as priorities, that's, we realize that's, you know, we've got to get the office space and room for the officers first and then we'll build a training room later. But that training room will be shared by the dispatchers and the police department. We've got room in the lower-left for future expansion and over on the right is, that actually will be open to the garage down below. So, that won't be, the second floor won't go all the way across the building. If we go to the next slide, we've got...
Just one comment on that, Jack, just so folks know. Because that building is now Norfolk-owned and is shared by four towns for the purposes of regional dispatch, we're going to collect about $40,000 of rent on an annual basis. So, that helps.
Yeah, that'll help. And we can apply that right to the debt. It'll actually come in as general revenue and we'll let town meeting decide what to do with it. So, once that, if this all goes as hoped, then we would construct that building and then we would move on to the fire department. So, if we can look at the, this is a site plan of the public, our current public safety building, which will become the fire department. You can see that hashed area, the dark purple in the middle is, that is the existing building. And then the lighter purple is an addition that we're proposing to put onto the right of the building. Part of that'll be extending over into that land that we bought from the Federated Church eight, eight years ago or so.
For the purposes of doing exactly what we're doing now.
So, we're going to build two bays over on the right, which will be wider and longer so we can actually fit the big trucks in without having to overlap them and not scrape, you know, not have to fold the mirrors in to get them into the garage. That will be helpful. We'll leave the four bays on the left side of the building for the ambulances and the other small trucks. And then we'll do some renovations to the building, as I said earlier. We'll remove the cells, we'll remove the, once the regional dispatch is up and running, we'll remove the dispatch area and we'll create areas for training and office space for the fire department. We'll be able to get out of the temporary building that we have out back and move on to, you know, get them all in the building. So, this is the proposed floor plan. Again, this is probably the sixth or seventh draft we've had. We'll probably still tweak this a little bit by the time we, before we go out to bid, but you can see the two bays over on the right, on the far right, where we put the big trucks. We've got area in the, kind of, next to the bays where there are the bunk rooms and offices, a lot of the spaces for the EMTs to store medical equipment, to take care of their, all the materials that go on to the ambulance and the fire trucks. You get back over into the part of the building that's at a different angle in the center of the building, and that's the old building. Really, not a lot of renovation going on there until you get rid of, over to the cell area and the dispatch area. But we're going to leave those offices that, you know, the old police office, chief's office will become the fire chief's office. We'll certainly clean it up and do what we need to do, improve the HVAC and the windows, et cetera, but doing as little tearing down of walls as possible just to minimize the cost.
Yeah, one of the things that folks have asked and have seen this project is why are we sort of adding on to an old building? You know, does that make sense? And in this particular case, it really does because the building itself, the walls, if you will, the structure is kind of like the old Freeman Building. You know, the old school that was built in the 30s. The building was solid as a rock.
Rock solid.
And, but the systems and everything were outdated. We will update all the systems and not having to do all the electronics and all of the considerations associated with dispatch is really what makes that work.
Yeah.
So, the fact that we were able to regionalize that makes this building, makes this project much more feasible than it was in the past.
Yeah, absolutely. And the old, the old part of the building that we're renovating is all of our low-tech, where the low-tech capabilities will be. You know, there's, over in the new section, where there, you know, there will be the areas where they have the heart monitors and things that they're working on. And they store the batteries and they have the medications, et cetera. Those will be in the new part of the building, which will be state-of-the-art.
Yeah, and police, police does not have to be centrally located.
Right.
They're patrolling 24/7, every street in town, every day. So, they're out on the road, whereas fire really does need to be centrally located so that they can minimize the amount of response time. And with regional dispatch now, I wouldn't tell folks that it, although I think it might save us some money over time, certainly the rent from our perspective, it'll be a positive, but to other towns, it may not be necessarily a cost savings. What it does do is it creates a great deal of redundancy. And it allows us to use the capabilities of the surrounding towns. Like, we have neighborhoods that border Franklin. And it may very well be that if there's an emergency, a Franklin police car would be much closer at any particular moment than a Franklin, than a Norfolk police car. And the dispatchers will know that.
Yep.
They'll have that information. So, the response times to these kinds of issues will be much more effective and efficient. So, it's really the efficiency and redundancy that creates the true benefit for this. Everyone thinks regionalization always is just driven by finances and it's really not. It's driven by capabilities more than anything else. So, it's, we're hoping it even goes beyond. We're having conversations about police and fire and how we might be able to, you know, we all have a ladder truck.
Yep.
None of us have 12-story buildings. You know, there may be some ways that we can share some services such as that as well. So, at least the conversations have started.
Yeah.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, no, they're, I agree with you 100% about the, not necessarily saving money today, but cost avoidance. You know, as we know, we have, you know, our alternative for dispatch really is either we've got to start thinking about adding a second, full-time, you know, second officer on duty 24/7, which is, you know, adding at least four more people to our staff. Either we do that or we regionalize. So, really, it's avoiding that, adding that second officer, which would be tremendous, you know, that would be much more bigger cost than regionalizing.
Yeah, for sure. Well, we hope that folks will come November 17th and support this. It, I think, is a well-thought-out plan. It's evolved due to a number of changing circumstances which have benefited us. So, we hope folks will come and support it. And then, we're going to make sure that we get as much detailed information out as possible prior to the vote. My hope is that we can mail every single registered household, if you will, registered voter household. I guess it's about 2,200, 2,500 households we have. With detailed information on exactly how we're going to finance this, what the cost will be, what its impact will be on taxes, so that everyone has good information and it's an informed vote. You know, I told the story before, but, you know, we tried to pass a new school back in the late 80s that would have cost us $12 million. I was on that building committee and I was on the school committee at the time. And it was a good plan. And it was not too dissimilar from what we ended up doing over here at the Freeman Kennedy School. That, but it was about 12 and a half million dollars to build that, one building, one facility to accommodate about 1,200 students. We lost at the ballot, I think, two if not three times. And so, we started looking at alternatives and we ended up building a second building, which you all know is the H. All of Day School. That was somewhere between eight and nine million dollars we put on in addition, which I think brought it up to about $15 million. And then, of course, we built this school for $30 million. So, if you, if you do the math, we spent just under $50 million, tad under $50 million to create two facilities that will house 1,200 kids, when we could have had that same facility. Granted, it would be 20 years old now, but we could have had a facility for $12 million that housed 1,200 kids.
Yeah.
And I understand... a facility for $12 million that housed 1,200 kids. And I understand, it's all about, you know, being able to afford it and the impact on taxes and all of that. But every year, these things get more and more expensive.
Yep.
And we have a unique opportunity because of regional dispatch with that facility that we already own, to be able to relocate the police department and allow us to renovate this. And I would add that the fire department doesn't have to leave the building while this renovation's going on. They stay right there because all the bays, where all the trucks are now, will be untouched. So there's just a lot of things about this project that make a lot of sense. So.
Yeah, it does. The transition for this project, as you said, is so much better because we get to build that, the new police station, we get to build that. And all of a sudden, you know, whatever day we pick, the police department gets to pick up their stuff and move to the new building.
Yeah.
And then we start renovating where the police department left from, and then the fire department can transition over to that space when, when that space is done.
And this really solidifies all of our infrastructure needs for the town.
Yep.
You know, we have two very nice schools. You know, no point
Town Hall.
No point, no point in worrying about what we didn't get. We're happy with what we do have and appreciate the support of everybody. Town Hall, if we get the police and fire, our infrastructure needs are pretty much met. There'll be probably a few things like, we have to do a little work down at DPW and things of that nature, but nothing of this magnitude.
Right.
This pretty much fixes us up. So, and Medfield, I might add. I mean, this is not unique to us. Medfield just passed a new public safety facility, and I believe the cost of theirs is $30 million.
Big, it's a big facility.
Big facility. Yes, it is.
Drove by that the other day.
Yeah, big facility.
Yeah, the only thing I can think of is, at some, at some point, as you said, DPW, we need a bigger salt shed, but that's
Well, it'd be nice if we could use less salt. Could we work that out?
Well, yeah, I can work that out if you can guarantee less cold temperature.
I remember a conversation towards the end of January, how about, we were gloating about how much we were going to save on snow and ice.
Yeah, I remember that.
And $400,000 later, we weren't so happy.
Wow. Well, I guess that's it about
I think so, yeah.
For town meeting. I know one thing that, one thing that we've kicked around a little bit, and you actually mentioned it while we walked over here, was the old town hall.
Oh, yeah.
Selectmen started talking about the idea of renovating that. And we're going to talk to our friends over at the CPC and see if they're interested in participating in that with the town's CPC funds, but
Well, we're preempting it a little bit, but
No, but I'd love to hear from people about what
We've been puzzled.
We think we could use that building for.
I think most of you know where Old Town Hall is. It's down past the police and fire station on Main Street. It's that building that isn't very attractive at this point in time. And we've been struggling as to what to do with it. We even considered one time selling the property and then realized that really wasn't a very smart thing to do because it's the only piece of property we still own in the center of town. So we removed it from the warrant. And, but it's, it needs work, and we can't continue to let it stay the way it is. And I asked Jack just to take a look at it one day to find out some history on it, because I really didn't know when it was built. And lo and behold, it was built in 1922.
Yeah.
So it qualifies under our historical provisions. And it is a pretty neat structure. So it's something we're looking at. We have needs for meeting rooms, and, I mean, the library is full all the time. Wouldn't it be nice to have an alternative to that, that the public could use? And, you know, recreation needs a facility, veterans needs a facility, the water department needs a facility. You know, there's a lot of opportunity to use common space like that to the benefit of the town.
Yeah.
So, and if we could use CPC funds, we haven't approached them. I have told the chair about our thoughts, so
CPC needs an office, too. So there's a little bit in there for
CPC, there we go. Thanks for bringing that up. There'll be no shortage of people wanting office space in that facility if we're able to do it. So, but it'd be fun to talk about. If it occurs, it'll be a spring meeting issue that we'll talk about. But it would be nice to do something with that building.
Yeah.
Really would.
It would be. It's frustrating, as I know, each year when we do the Memorial Day Parade to walk by that building and kind of just try not to look at it while we're, it is what it is.
Yeah, it is what it is.
All right, well, unless you have something else?
No, I think we've probably gone longer than we meant to.
All right, well, I'd like to
Thank you very much for joining us. And Jack, thanks for inviting me again.
Well, thanks to you for being here. And thank you to NCTV. I know Chris is out there working his magic. So thank you, Chris, for taking care of us and putting the slides together. So thank you, everybody. And I hope you have a great winter, if I don't see you. But I hope to see you at Fall Town Meeting on November 17th, 7 o'clock at the King Philip Mills School.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Unfortunately, it's far too close.
It is. Take care.